It is seven, we're live, so I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Yep, we do have a quorum, so before we begin, I'll just have everyone go around the room and introduce themselves.
Skip Severance.
John Moran's here, but he's not right at the moment. Darius Sabaskam.
Edward Veal.
Doug Cummings.
So this, we don't have any cases for tonight, so we are planning on utilizing this for, you know, if there's public comment to come in, we always reserve time of night for that, but we do have a few items of housekeeping that we were planning on using tonight for. One thing that was added for us to discuss potentially that's not on here is budget, that came up. So it's very early phases, so we can kind of start working on that a little bit. Do you know when the actual budget is due? So the thing is, obviously, this is our only meeting in November, we don't have another meeting until December. And so I think we can discuss it a little bit and then, you know, at the next official meeting, make sure, we'll make sure it's on the agenda. And, and, you know, we can make a formal motion at that point.
It was on the agenda before the Budget Committee meeting last night, they mentioned it, but obviously I was going to leave, so they didn't.
So I don't know, I've got the Excel, but you probably don't have it on yours, so basically where we're at for, for the Planning Board, so.
You can tell me zoning too.
Yeah, so we have planning and zoning, zoning is usually less because they usually have lower caseload, not necessarily less demanding caseload, but.
You were introduced.
So last year, for two thousand twenty-four, they approved default budget for the Planning Board was forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven. Where we're at actual year-to-date is fifty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars.
That's a difference.
What's the difference?
It is a difference, I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, especially because the year's not done. Some of that's the engineering, no, yeah, engineering legal reimbursement offsetting, so that's eleven thousand six hundred, if you take that off, you were below, we're still below budget.
Okay, good.
So that'll put us at forty-one thousand.
And we didn't start getting the packets covered until the rest of the year was done, so it should really be a lot better next year, right?
Yep. Yeah, and then the goal is to potentially use some of those, once we see what that, those numbers look like, we could start using those towards, you know, the other planning services that we need with SRPC that is in our contract now, so. So the two thousand twenty-three budget was fifty-nine thousand seven fifty-four, actual was sixty, almost sixty-two thousand. Again, nine thousand of that is offsetting revenue. Twenty twenty-two, fifty thousand was the budget, and fifty-one, seven eighteen was the actual. And there was nothing showing as offsetting on, for Planning Board legal engineering reimbursement on that one. So where, that brings us to this year, one item we know that's been asked for is a new laptop for the land use clerk. The laptop currently is, I think, a decade old, maybe, and is definitely showing its, its age for efficacy. So there's a bid or a quote out there, or a new laptop right around nine hundred dollars, so it would be split between Planning Board and zoning. Is, so we have potential four hundred and fifty-dollar line item for that, for Planning Board equipment. And then the only other thing I had potentially for the board to consider is obviously for one year, we were SRPC members, dues-paying members, and then obviously that got cut last year in the budget. So if we were to add that back in again this year, Nottingham's portion, and it's done by population, that's how they calculate that, would be six thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents.
That's almost the same as it was before, right?
Yeah, it gets adjusted by, by population, so.
What was that number again?
Six thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents. No, no rounding. Trying to see if we had that on the, what year showed up in the budget.
And the intention is, is that we're going to pay that due again this year?
Something for the board to discuss and consider, but miscellaneous, yeah, sixty-five, just under sixty, sixty-four hundred, the last time we paid for it, so yeah, so it's changed a little bit, but not much.
There's a good chance that it gets, it gets approved if we don't go to the default budget.
If we go to the default budget.
Then it's going to get cut.
Of course, yeah.
Oh, it won't be there.
There we are, there you go.
It won't be there.
It just won't be there, so.
It's valuable service.
Well, yeah, and it's not our, it's not.
They don't sit here with us to know.
Yeah, and it's not our contract, our SRPC contract that we have for the Circuit Rider, partly, that Blair, when Blair's here, he's traveling this week, he let us know he wouldn't be here, and I didn't feel we needed anybody from SRPC, I figured we'd save the, the hours and the cost tonight. But the, it's, this is the membership, so you do, it's part of our contract, we do, would get some sort of discount on the hourly rate, and it's because they, they give the dues-paying members a, I think it's like a ten percent discount on the hourly rate, and then there probably are some other services that open it up, but it just continues to support what the Regional Planning Commissions do, specifically Stratford, Regional Planning Commission, what they do, which is, there's a lot of benefits that we get and the other communities get from them doing things regionally.
We also get a vote now, too.
And we would get a vote, yeah, we, we lost, we lost our vote this year.
Right.
So we can, if we have commissioners that we appoint, or representatives that we appoint, they can partake in things, they can provide input, but for a lot of the voting items, there's no vote for, for the non dues-paying members.
Well, I sit there and I vote on some of the things, but whether they count me or not, I have no idea. But I still do, it's like all those in favor of the minutes.
Yeah.
I, it's like.
So I think that's just something for us to, to consider and think about, I'll make sure this gets shared to everybody in between.
But let me ask you, with having, I'm going to go back to it again, the packets paid for, the budget really should be able to, regardless if it's default or not, cover that membership, because we're going to have a huge chunk of our costs being covered. Because most of our cost was mailing, I mean, we do have the clerk.
Yeah, not seven thousand dollars worth of cost, though.
Pardon?
Not seven thousand dollars worth of mailing.
Are you, really? Yes, with the packets that go out? Alana, roughly, how much, do you have an idea on what mailings were for us this year?
Just to the members?
Planning Board postage, is that, that now, or is that, do you know how that shows up?
That should be accurate, it's, it's calculated off the postage machine, and every time I, every time I put postage, I put either Planning Board or zoning board, so those numbers should be correct.
So we're, for Planning Board postage, which I didn't know if that also included when.
That's for both, that's for certified mail that gets mailed out and for.
Which gets re, which gets reimbursed, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, we're at fifteen hundred so far? And this was as a mock number?
Probably fifty a month, like, max.
Okay.
If you average it out, yeah, because it was ten dollars for the seven members.
Yeah.
That might be another one where it's maybe a line we, well, shows offsetting because they pay for it, but it's included in there.
So what's our biggest cost?
The, two things, our two biggest, two biggest costs that are not offsetting is our planner, the planning contract, and our, and the land use secretary, which I'm not looking to cut.
We've only got her two days a week, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that office is very, very busy, I can tell by the emails that, you know, that they, that I get involved with, and that's just a small part, part of it.
And then now we've got the person that's typing up the minutes, too, right, so that gets.
I don't know, I haven't checked in with the town administrator on that to see how the, how those are going to get calculated for the, the fees.
And that person's doing that remotely, I talked to Ellen yesterday, and yeah, that person's in Oregon.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I guess perhaps traveling, I don't know for sure, but.
I mean, the YouTube videos for all the meetings that are recorded have been ready to be posted like the next day or so, so that's basically she's doing for the minutes is watching the YouTube video.
Right.
She told me she lives in Rainham.
Does she? Then she's probably just traveling.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. John, you know, a lot depends on whether or not the community accepts the upcoming budget, and if we don't go to default again. A lot of things, you know, for us, even here on the Planning Board, do the taxes go out like next week?
Actually, in December, I think.
Yeah. The Wichita, oh, what's that, I can't remember the form number, I know.
MS one.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. I think it's, I'll talk to Ellen, yeah, I used to talk to her probably tomorrow or Friday, I'll talk to her, but that should be also to go, we should be, send me that to the state in order to get the number.
Okay, you know, in reading what's going on in Northwood and Deerfield, they're going out of their minds, the taxes doubled on them, for the semi-end.
That's entirely possible for no reason.
I don't, you know, it's just, it makes it harder to get a real budget in order to follow budget when that stuff happens.
Yeah, but whatever we propose for a budget today is not going to affect the taxes coming to January or February, I think, it doesn't make a difference.
The upcoming year, yeah.
So, but the state, whatever, the money, the, that also can help dictate why that, that might go up, too.
Yeah, the state sets it, so, and you, and you only paid half of, half, half of last year's because you didn't know what the rate was, so it's a catch-up deal.
Look at that!
Isn't that good?
No.
I'm going to put a video presentation together so everybody can watch it, and then you don't have to listen to me talk.
So Mr. Evans has joined the meeting, it's seven twelve. So we're just, we're just having a quick conversation on, on, on budget, because it's getting to budget season. So I was, I'll, I'll get this sent out to everybody with, where the budget's been for the last three years. But to Mrs. Bascom's point about, with the fee changes we've, we've adopted, or the, the Select Board has approved, which is shifting some of the costs for the planning side of it back to applicants, would that shift allow us to just absorb the, the cost for SRPC membership? My hesitation with doing that is we have so many things that are behind that we, that I was hoping for, so it's either we, we'd have to add another line item for master plan, review, impact fee, updates, those kind of items that we're behind on. But the goal was to potentially use those as we get into the next, you know, first quarter, we'll have a better idea of, you know, how we're doing on the SRPC budget, and what funds might be available, and start having them contract that.
I thought with membership, though, we received some assistance from them on master plan updates and such, no?
I'll double-check, that's one of my, my, my notes to myself was to go back through and get, and receive some of those, the updates again of like those added benefits of being a member, so. So there's a part where all the other communities are paying for it right now, so technically they're covering, covering our costs, and we're not, we're not contributing to it.
I think back a while.
But there are additional things that come, come into it.
Back a ways, they would review all the census data and manipulate that and send it to the town for use in the master plan.
Okay.
I don't know if that's kind of what you're thinking, but.
No.
Sure it's worded, it's, it's, they're doing it for you, but.
I just, I thought that at one of the last meetings, and I can ask, I'm going on, on Friday, but I thought they had talked about working with towns that are members on their master plan updates, and most of it would be like on roads and safe roads and that type of thing, because that's what SRPC is really into.
It should take us more than a year to get that all updated and changed, so it's set for the next ten years, since we already have a master plan.
It, yeah.
It's supposed to be every five years.
Yeah, but let's.
Who's saying? Who's paying attention to that state law?
Let's shoot for ten, was this, the last time this was done was twenty-eleven, is that correct?
Twenty-ten, actually, but yeah.
Twenty-ten, all right, so we're fifteen years behind.
And it's our roadmap, and we, we need a roadmap, otherwise we're steering blindly. The state actually sets forth, that is, our duties, have planning, a planning board to update that, and we are not doing our duty, and that towns should requisition funds to update this, because we're all volunteer, and this all costs money and time and effort. And the school went up one point one million, I think we had previously asked John about the income generated from the planning boards such as impact fees and additional property taxes generated on the tax base, and the fees that we collect versus our expenses that we're probably generating income, and we should apply some of that income towards updating the master plan.
You want to make that a shorter statement?
Did anybody ever figure out how much the planning board brings in and how much we cost?
Yeah, it's right there in the budget.
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
That's a lot.
Yep, I'm a little lost on that one.
No, our, our planning, our planning board, our budget, what, the approved budget for twenty-four, twenty-four was, is the default budget, was forty-three, four-three-seven.
Forty-three thousand seven hundred.
Forty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, nice, nice even, even number. The engineering side of me hates, like, I just want to go to like significant, significant numbers here, but.
But the good thing is, is that right now, we're talking about, we're going to do the master plan.
Right.
Okay.
So the goal.
And hopefully we'll get this HOP grant, which I called on the other day to ask if that was updated, and they are processing the application, so that would be twenty-five thousand dollars freebie, the state is trying to help us and give us money, give us money.
That'll make a nice master plan.
Give us, give us, give us the money that we already paid somewhere else, it's, it's, yeah, it all comes from somewhere.
So. It's an oxymoron, isn't it?
Yeah, it's no such thing.
It's like taking, taking two, two dollars, you're fucking from a dollar back in that one, I gave you a dollar, yeah.
But, but we do cause projects to be approved, which has impact fees and building permits and raises the tax base, and we should not have our hands tied or limited to a, we can't mail forms out on our budget, it's ridiculous.
I don't think you can use impact fees for a master plan.
You can't.
No, it doesn't make a difference.
No, impact, impact fees are, are very lim, are extremely limited, you see.
They're only for new.
I, I'm just saying that we're, you know, we're moving a project or making something happen, that we're causing income to come into the town, and that our town needs more income.
Sure, it's like everybody, any, the whole person that lives in town, everybody needs more income.
Well, the town needs more income, the town is like a business, and if you run your business.
Not like it is.
It is a business.
The town is a nonprofit business, we're not here to make money, we're here to make enough money to satisfy the needs of the people of the town, that's it. There's no profit margin in what we do.
Our taxes went up twelve point two percent last year.
Well, that's because the people that work here need to get, we have to pay people money, you want fire department, you want.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Let's not get off the subject, get back to what we're talking about.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question, Ed. How much, and I'm, I'm completely, I have no idea, that's why I'm asking the question, but what do you think it might cost to have a professional write us a master plan? How does that happen?
You don't want that.
At least ten grand, probably more.
Okay.
The other thing is, we can't find anybody anymore, there was only a couple in the area that seemed to have.
And it won't be written or reflected on again.
Yeah, no, they just kind of, oftentimes it seems like it.
We had a guy working with us that, that would provide us with a chapter.
That was a guy from Maine that came down to do it, wasn't he?
Jack, somebody around there.
Jack Meddy?
Meddy, yeah.
He did the master plan, too, yeah, he did a lot of the zoning, or something, yeah.
He, he, he met with us all the time, and he'd bring a chapter, the standard chapter, and then we'd go through it to make it Nottingham.
Right.
Was I on the board with you at that?
No, this was before you.
So basically it's taken like a template from somewhere else, and.
Yeah, thank you.
But then he still didn't all work.
You don't have to do the whole thing every five years, but you have to update it.
You don't even, you don't even have to update it, I think, I think the verbiage is, it should be, I think it should be updated.
True, true.
And, and the quality of master plans from town to town, there, there's no, there's no definition on that, like, you'll, you will see some, they have something that, it's called a master plan.
Right.
Meets the definition, because it says master plan on it, and then you have some that are obviously much more detailed.
Because I know where Chris is coming from, and I was thinking about the same thing, I mean, if we, as a planning board, approve the development of twenty-five new homes, and these new homes are valued at eight hundred thousand dollars each, there's a tax number involved with that, you know, have we generated some revenue for the town, or does it cost the town? I'm very unclear on that every time I ask the question, because of the impact of the new families.
The new families, the school in ten years has gone up fifteen students, new families can't afford to buy a house in this town.
Yeah, but without drilling down into the micro, on the macro, how does it, how does it affect?
Yeah, so I'll get this, I'll have this, the, the Excel sheet sent out to everybody, so you can see it. Tonight was just, this was sent to me by Ellen, the town administrator, for us to start talking about, because CIP is being involved, is starting to get together now, and they're trying to get ahead of budget season, so. Again, the only things I thought we might propose for changes, you know, are, are those two items, definitely a laptop for the land use clerk, and potentially SRPC membership. And then, again, once we get into the beginning of next year, we'll see where we're at, we're at with our current SRPC budget, because that goes through June thirtieth. But obviously, whatever the budget we have is calendar year, so it's, it's a little tricky, but we'll be able to have a better idea for the board of, of, okay, we have five thousand dollars, we can, with that, SRPC in our contract, should start being able to tackle the impact fee part for us, because those definitely need to be reviewed or addressed, and it's either we address them by having them updated, or, you know, zero them out, remove them.
This could be a good time to get all that done, because Chris is going to get us a nice HOP grant.
John, thank, thank you for bringing up our planner at your Selectman meeting today, and advocating for him, and that he contributes and makes great helpful services for us.
He does.
We, I mean, the zoning.
I thought it did have a year in it, too.
Somewhat beyond, it's, you know, it's very complex, you know, when you add all the layers on there, it's very, very complex, and we, we need those engineers and experts in those fields, I mean, I know a little bit about septic systems, I flush my toilet and it goes in and away, and that's good, but you know, there's, there's a lot of technical details and things that we, we can't all know.
So there's just a lot of chuckling a little bit, the RSA for the master plans says the, the Planning Board shall, from time to time, update the master plan. So I don't know what the definition of from time to time is.
Where would the five-year thing come from?
But I think, I think five, the five to ten is, is, is what, OSI, ODP, I still don't know which acronym I'm writing more.
It's tied with the census.
Yeah.
When you get the new census figures, if you read through there, you'll see that it's.
That makes sense.
Littered with census numbers.
It's also tied in, I, I, six forty-one-one, I believe, it's also tied in with the needs of the people in the town for housing, and, and.
You're only looking at one small portion of the master plan, that's okay, I understand.
That's what we're here about, we're in the planning board, we're supposed to be, we're driving this big ship, you know, oh, look, iceberg ahead. Oh, wait, we already hit that iceberg, this, watch out for the next one.
It's funny you should say that, on, it's, you know, how does the community feel, because for the last several weeks, every time I got around more than one or two people in our community, I asked them about, hey, how do you think, what do you think about ADUs? First, I have to tell them what it is, and I'm getting everybody's opinion, we did it at a couple of committee meetings, and you know what they're all saying to, I haven't had one person say, no, don't do that.
Right.
Everybody says, yes, that's a good idea, detached ADUs.
There's, there's a hundred and six houses in Nottingham which have more than one kitchen, right now.
Oh, mansions?
Huh?
Big mansions?
Some may be the mansions with the two kitchens.
No, it's a way to, way to kind of calculate, like, okay, they have more than one kitchen, then call it.
That's from the, from the assessor, I collected that data, and I said, hey, how many houses have, how many ADUs these, we don't categorize. Well, what makes an ADU a kitchen or cooking facilities, how many have more than one kitchen? Hundred and six.
Hundred and six.
I have that data here, if anybody likes, I have lots of data here.
I'd be. So I'll get this out, that'll, we'll, we'll top, tap out for the budget for now, but I'll get that part sent out, so. Items for, that, I'd like us to keep moving on, moving forward on, where the zoning ordinance potential changes, steep slopes, that draft, after we had the prior meeting, and we, there was a lot of input provided back. Blair took that input, tweaked, cleaned up the, the ordinance, and Ms. Kenny has, has put it there, put it up on the screen for us to, to see, or it's also in your packets, if you don't want, don't want to strain your neck.
What?
Looking, but. So basically, we, we tried to clean it up and, not strip it down, but make it as simple as possible. The prior one had a lot of extra information that probably wasn't needed. It was, this is to be applied towards major subdivisions, which is under the applicability.
Can I ask a question on that, what we're going to talk about, right?
I hope so.
Yeah, I was looking for this.
On the purpose, right down there, the purpose of Steepsoil Protection District is to protect public health. What is the health part of a steepsoil, what is that, what does that mean? Why is that?
If you're.
Runoff and.
Kid wants to slide down a hill, he could get a.
No, it's runoff and things like that, that usually occur in areas that are impacted by, by, by steep slopes.
Runoff of the rain?
Erosion, runoff, pollution, all kinds of fun things that occur in those areas.
How old is this piece? Where did this come from, you said it was.
No, the original was from Jack Meddy, I think, was it, we contracted for it, but if you research it, I think it was almost the template exactly that came from OSI, from the state.
Because right away, when I think of, you know, if runoff is a problem, you can engineer around that, you can remediate that. So it's not a good reason to vote on twenty-five-degree steep slopes, water runoff shouldn't be a problem.
Well, no, that's not true, you'd have to do something up above in order to protect that rainwater from eroding that away.
You can do something.
But, but the purpose of this is to preserve that, that kind of a mountain thing, if you will.
Well, preservation is another question, or another answer, but rainwater runoff being the reason why you wouldn't do it is not a good reason. We can remediate for that.
No, I mean, I think.
Twenty-five percent slope disallows a walkout basement on a house, I am a high percentage against.
It doesn't, Mr. Evans, we've clarified that, I think, I can't even, ad nauseam, so this is about major subdivisions, we put criteria in for the, the area that's being impacted, so it's for the roadways, things like that. Someone that has a, an individual house that they're putting in a walkout basement, they're building it into the hillside, not impacted by this one bit.
It's not in the, if it's not in the buildable envelope that we create, and it's not included, they can't, they shall build in the buildable envelope, that's not part of the buildable envelope, they can't build there, it's a limitation on housing.
So you're saying, the way our current zoning ordinance is, that already says that's unfit for building, which is, I think, in line with the majority of the communities in the state. So that's a different discussion, that's a completely different discussion, because that, that goes to our unfit-for-building definition in sensitive areas, it comes up in a lot of places in the zoning ordinance, but what we're talking about tonight is our Steepsoil Protection District potentially adding, adding one to apply towards major subdivisions only, and there would be additional criteria, so it's not.
And site plans, it says.
And site plans, correct, sorry, yeah, major subdivisions and site plans.
So site plans probably involve existing lots that probably have these conditions, because we're in New England with steep slopes.
Sure, of course.
So, to me, that particular state there, the purpose should lead protect public health, safety, and general welfare by, and then change controlling to control and guide, or guiding to guide the use of land with steep slopes.
Yeah, so you're actually, take out that, this is where it's.
It made no sense to me.
Well, I guess, that's why I was bringing it up, when I read it, it's like, I don't understand, so, I can see by starting it, the purpose of the Steepsoil Protection District is by controlling and guiding the use, but take out everything before.
Right.
Read it like that.
Yeah, but those are the words that make this good, because we're, we're doing those things by doing that, I, I don't.
Well, it goes to A through F, I mean, so that doesn't stand alone, it's, it's, you know, you're doing those things.
Correct.
You know, and I think.
Most of my A through F, I have question marks on.
Okay. Okay.
They don't, I'm not understanding why perhaps...
Where, where is this in here?
Yeah, well, Elena, where is this in our packets?
Case other, this is where it was in mine.
Case other?
Case other, thank you.
There you go.
Mine's blue.
There we are.
Mine's blue.
So, if I may just simply chime in, um, on this. Uh, three hundred years the town's been having houses built, and hasn't had a steep slope restriction yet, so I don't know why we need to add more restrictions to the current housing crisis that we're in. Twenty-five percent does not work for a walkout basement. A forty by fifty area that it calls for in this slope thing, two thousand square feet, is a house area. Kick that right off the lot, um, right out of the building envelope. Uh, this is gonna create more restrictions to housing, and, um, and push up the cost of housing further by limiting the size and use of lots, and reasonable usage. Um, I think that, A, we should not vote this in. Uh, but if we do, I think we should update the, uh, steep slopes to thirty-five percent, and the area in the subdivision to some five thousand square feet. So, it's like, oh, there's a little bump over there, kick that out, in the middle of your lot, there's a little hump there, kick it out, right out of your building envelope, and just screwed up that lot. We have enough things to screw up lots right now.
Keep in mind, this is for major subdivisions.
Correct.
Right, so it's not individual homes.
But a, a major subdivision is...
Made up of individual homes.
Four or more.
Four.
Four or more.
That's really, I mean...
So...
And those homes have bumps and curves and grades, and those will not be in the building envelopes, and therefore, according to our, our, in the ordinance, it says, the houses shall be in that envelope, and that's gonna be removed from the envelope, so those areas will be unbuildable and unfit for building. Um, so if we do want to produce and do something with this, I think the last thing that we should do is add a, um, a provision where we could, um, provide a conditional use permit the planning board can, so that we don't have to send every single one to, um, the zoning board for a bump on a hillside somewhere.
It's another variance at the zoning board?
No, no, no more, please, thank you.
So, there's a lot of pieces there, so some, it's construing two different parts of the zoning ordinance. So, there's the fit-for-building, which we're not talking about at the moment, that's in the building envelope. Those are completely separate, that's not being touched by this. Fit-for-building in the, in the areas unfit-for-building being any area with twenty-five percent slope or more. That's, that, that's still there regardless of this. So, this two thousand square foot area that's, the board decided on, um, that's just the, the qualification, you know, again, on, on major subdivisions. And site plans, uh, you know, for areas to, to avoid, so. It, it doesn't change anything to the other part about a house lot that has an area right now that's, that's a steep slope, that's still unfit for building, they still can't build on it.
Do you, do you think that instead of dealing with the steep slope ordinance for now, we should work on the definitions and streamlining those for fit-for-building and...
Sure.
Unfit-for-building and lot envelope, because I think that we're gonna go round and round with this?
Well, I thought we were, I thought we were, after that last meeting where we got to this point, and we took this from three pages to, to this, it's, I thought the board was in a place where, you know, it seemed like we had this digested.
It seems like we're not tonight, though.
And that's, and that, yeah. So, again, my goal was to try to, I thought we could get through some, because...
One, one.
Well, because anything, if we do propose a warrant article, before we send it, hold the public hearing, we, we always send it to the legal for review, the draft language, whatever else. So, there's that timeline involved, um, to make sure that they have enough time to review it and get back to us, which on something like this probably wouldn't take, I'm not gonna guess on time. Yeah, I'm not gonna guess on anything.
And, and I agree with you that it would be good, I thought we were at a place where we could do that too, but I'm not hearing anywhere near agreement on what has been done tonight. But I do think that, rather than tying us up to the next hour and a half, going round and round over this, we could look at the definitions, which we also need to get tied up, because those will need to go for vote as well.
Yeah, let's pen, so let's, we can come back to it tonight as time allows. Let's pen this piece for, for a moment, and go on to a different part of it.
Before we end that, and I'm sorry to kind of jump in like a, um, what about, I mean, a, a twenty-five percent grade is, is like, like this?
We know, you've told us a million times.
It's significant.
Can we just up that a little bit?
To, to what number, a hundred percent? I mean, at some point, the twenty-five percent is, is the area that a, a lot of studies have shown, like, that's when you start to get into areas that it, it becomes very significant, like, for, you know, engineering pieces of it. Those areas have been avoided historically. That, that wasn't a problem for three hundred years, because people didn't deal with them. You weren't gonna go cut, do a, you know, these huge cuts and fills with oxen, you know, if, you just wouldn't build there. The economy is what it is right now, and you could put a house there and sell it for eight hundred thousand dollars, so you can financially make money doing it, even though the, the cost to build there is extraordinary. So, that, there's a, a different economy of scale there that's allowing this to happen. And, and we have to, we're reacting to it, um...
It's just an extra limit, and we already have...
And I understand that, you, you made your point a bunch of times, where you feel like any limitation is too mu, is, is a limitation we shouldn't have. So, I get your point, there's other members of the board, everybody has a say.
Can we put a conditional use approval on that?
We, we can, I don't think anybody's drafted one, because again, a conditional use permit, that comes with its own, um, its own issue. So, again, if, if the board has a conditional use permit, and they deny it, then it goes to Superior Court for, for appeal instead of zoning. So, it kicks it right out of the town's hands. There's also special exceptions could be done, which would still be, that would be zoning, but it's an easier process, um...
There just may be reasonable situations that we can't anticipate every single potential that, um, would warrant that, and instead of somebody looking at the zoning, go, oh, I got a, a lot with a hill in it, it's, I can't build on it or develop it, it's, um, yet there are ways to work around.
They can, they can build three or fewer houses, but they go to four or more, then, then they, they can't. We'll come back to this. Let me, um, let's try, see if we get to one of the other items, because we did not get a chance to. We did talk about it a little bit, but we didn't get all the way through it, uh, I think it was two meetings ago. And these are, this was some verbiage I came together with on these, so we could definitely change it, um...
What are you looking at?
Oh.
I was thinking we were gonna talk about...
I'm sorry.
That's okay, where are we, where are we headed? The next page?
Where did these come from?
These were handed to us.
Oh, sorry, yeah, so...
Not that long ago.
So, I did not prepare anything on the, so, I think Ms. Sebastian was referring to something that was handed to us by an applicant, uh, for fit-for-building, unfit-for-building, lot envelope in the articles. So, where I had come, where we had, we talked about as a board, our Article Two, C two E.
Yep.
Uh, but also pertinent would be Article Two, E two, B three, so that's residential agricultural district, and then E is the commercial industrial zone, so both actually need cleanup. And where the confusion has come, came from was, over the last ten years, septic was added into the, the lot envelope, septic was taken out, or the setbacks were changed, you know, were more, made restrictive, and then made less restrictive on the septic. It went to fifty feet, and then it was taken back down to twenty feet. But it was never cleaned up in the, it's cleaned up in the table, but not in the, um, the definition, so. Right now... Right now, the way that reads in our, in the commercial, I mean, I'm sorry, in the residential district, is each lot must contain a two hundred by two hundred foot square fit-for-building or a thirty thousand square foot contiguous area lot envelope in which a house and septic, and septic system shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, blah, 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 blah. The area, the issue as I see it, is that the and septic system shall be placed, wasn't, wasn't taken, wasn't moved or, or cleaned up, because we allow that now to be outside that lot envelope. So, the verbiage I came up with, or proposing to clean that up, I gave two options. Option one would be, each lot must contain a two hundred by twenty, two hundred square foot building or thirty thousand square foot contiguous area lot envelope in which a, a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances consisting of upland soil, so that stays the same. The septic system shall also originate within the fit-for-building area, but may extend outside of it as long as the lot meets all setbacks. And then I cleaned up the however, pre-existing nonconform, just made that like a separate little paragraph. Or option two, um, same start, contiguous area lot envelope in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, and the septic system shall, at minimum, be partially contained within this area, but may extend outside as long as setbacks are adhered to. This area must consist of upland soil, so. And then I've gotten updated, what was supposed to be a chart, it was a chart on my Word doc, but it, it dropped all the lines, to, to clean up the chart as well.
Oh, the chart, okay, do we, do we still need that chart, do you think?
I think the, the chart was something we added in a few years ago, because, because people found it a lot easier to look at than trying to read through and, and figure out where setbacks were, otherwise we have to go back in and...
But then it seemed like it was more confusing to people this past year, or at least some, with the...
One, one part of the chart that bothers me is the septic system. Setbacks, if you will, are governed by the state, not by us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'd like to see it gone, personally.
So, then we really don't need the chart if we do that, though?
Well, it's not, the state sets the minimum threshold, we can be more restrictive.
And we are, we're twenty.
Yeah.
But as soon as we do that, it goes to the zoning board and you get it to what the state, so...
But not, that's for the pre-existing nonconforming, I don't think we've had any conforming lots.
In my world, here's the deal. It seems to me, in order for these lots to be acceptable, we need at least two acceptable test pits on that area, whatever you wanna call the area. That's what it sounds like to me. I don't know why we ever came up with a four K, four K square, or area, or whatever. To me, that made no sense whatsoever.
Well, the four K area, that's the, the area that the two test pits have to be done in.
I hear that.
Yeah.
But it's the test pits that have to be in that, it's not a septic system.
Well, that's where the septic system is expected to go.
Well, I have an issue with that, as I said last time. I, I don't think we should be telling people where they put septic systems. It, we need to be proving lots as being buildable.
But when we're looking at, say, a major subdivision, someone's coming in with thirty houses, that's thirty septic systems, that, when you're engineering that out and planning it, it's kind of important to know, like, okay, well, this, this is where these are proposed to be, it may change things if they, you know, they say, no, we're gonna bump all these to the, to the corners of the...
No, that's not the way it works.
The lots.
They go, they use the test pits that are there, or they dig new test pits. That, that's it. The state gets the, the documentation, the engineering documentation, that these test pits are the ones we did, that's where we're gonna put the, the deal. Now, I can't speak for what happens in the building department here, but I know that if, if they look at this and say it shall, that's an easy thing for them. I understand that. But I don't understand, all we're doing is, we're seeing lots, lot lines put on pieces of paper and that define for us what would be a conforming lot. Though to me, if there's two test pits within a four K area, I guess, um, I'm good. It proves that a septic system can be placed in that lot. I mean, that, that's the way I look at it.
I, I agree, at the four K area in our lot envelope has to be fifty feet from the side of the setback.
I don't wanna even get into the setback yet, but I agree with you that that's the way it should be.
So, that creates another issue.
But I don't even care about the four K, that's why I was talking about just two test pits.
Right.
Right?
I, I...
But I don't know the ins and outs of that four K area.
I think we should make a motion to amend our twenty-foot septic setback to as required by the state, and, and that whole debacle.
So, the state will allow probably a septic on a quarter acre lot?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, there's a big difference between that and a, a two acre lot, and, and that's why they, all other lots, that means they're two acres or more, they're conforming, they meet all setbacks. You should be able to have at least, you know, twenty feet from, because you may have, but, non-conforming lots and everything else, I don't see the, I don't understand the, the hindrance of, on a conforming lot, of saying, okay, for being a good neighbor, keep twenty feet between, you know, this and this, because otherwise you're cutting down all the trees, everything is gonna be cleared.
The twenty-foot setback applies to existing and conforming lots both. It doesn't just apply to new subdivisions.
Correct.
So, twenty-five percent of our town has under an acre of land.
I guess, so here's my thing, this isn't what, what, this was discussed about. What we're talking about tonight, and what the point of this is, is to clean up the language that's there now. It wasn't to amend, the only time, the only thing we talked about amending, and it was agreed upon, was agreed upon by the board earlier, was, we talked about reducing the ten feet for pre-existing non-conforming lots, and bringing that to the state, the state minimum. And I understand Mr. Severance's point, well, you could just get rid of it, because that is the state's...
I raise your call.
The state's piece of it, but, um, nowhere did we talk about, you know, changing that for, or, it was decided that we're gonna keep the twenty feet for all other lots, because there should be no problem for that, but the... The joint meeting with the, the ZBA, you know, seeing most of the cases come, come for the septic systems on the pre-existing non-conforming, was like, hey, we can, we can try to clean that up and ease that, but we can't go less than the state minimum. So, we have two pieces here. We have that, but the bigger part being, right now, the language says the thirty thousand area, that the septic has to be in that thirty thousand K area, and that's actually not the case, because we took it out previously.
Right, that's, that's why I'm offering the two test pit then, rather than the, the four K.
Yeah.
And the two test pits should be in that area.
The state requires a four K, the state requires a four K.
Four K what?
Four K area for a septic.
The, the four K area is not even in, it's not even...
I don't understand what the state does, all I care about is what we need to do here.
The four K area is not even in this, this, this section, so we're getting, we're, we're, again, construing a different, different piece.
But how do you prove that the lot is an acceptable lot? That's what I went down through. And most of them are here under requirements, which is where they are, and then the, the three is setbacks, right? Okay? The problem is, under requirements, we start talking about setbacks, all right? Which is fine, as long as there's something there that ties specifically and correctly to the setbacks. And it doesn't right now, and that's what we're talking about, I understand that. The pre-existing non-conforming kindness needs to disappear from this, and have its own section, in my book.
Right there.
Requirements for non...
Just down a little, nope.
The pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Bring setbacks down.
You're saying like, pull it out, pull...
Pull it out specifically.
It's E, we're looking at.
Like its own section in, in the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
So, that, we can do that, but that definitely won't get done this year, or probably next. Because I think, unless there's a way, an easy path forward for that that you could think of?
Well, I, I think the, the setback aspect is he, that's here, is really what the pre-existing non-conforming lots start to build up around, and so, we just take this chart and make it two charts, one for pre-existing non-conforming, and one for, um, acceptable lots, that's not the right terminology, but whatever that is.
What, why would we need to break that out into two when it is already two? But we were actually talking about E anyway.
Yes, well, you talk about E, okay? I'll make it even more confusing. What the hell is the two hundred by two hundred foot square? What possible inference can that make on anything? It, it just needs to have at least thirty thousand square feet. You're, you're saying you either need forty thousand square feet, or you need thirty thousand square feet? I, I don't get it.
I don't know, I, I, I'm thinking that is carryover from prior iterations of the zoning ordinance, because you look back at old plans, you see two hundred by two hundred square.
And it is, and it is, and it's just carried through, but... And it is, and it is, and it's just carried through. But as Chris was presenting to us, a 200-foot frontage on a lot, in a rectangular lot, the 200 by 200-foot buildable square, as it shows here, I'm assuming then does not have the lot envelope aspect to it because you've got the OR in here? I'm not an English expert, but it could be because the OR, all of that other stuff after the OR is its own thing, and then the other thing is the other thing. Well, that doesn't, now you have to define what fit for building is, and then you have to define what the contiguous area lot envelope is.
And we have those, so that's great.
And we have them in there, I understand.
So may I?
But the reality of the situation basically is, it's 30,000 square feet of some contiguous area that defines it as upland soils and it's, it's buildable.
Yeah, so for that, for that point of it, I think.
So that's E.
I think, so taking out the 200 by 200 square and just cleaning that language up saying each lot must contain a 30,000 square foot contiguous area lot envelope which has.
I would choose to get rid of lot envelope and just make it of upland soils. Get rid of in which a house and septic system shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances. I, the setback ordinances, I say applicable setback ordinances.
Well, since we defined lot envelope and the lot envelope is defined pretty much the same.
Yeah.
So, so you could almost just take that out to say.
Town of Bow has a.
Must contain a lot envelope.
Town of Bow has a building envelope definition already written. Building, the applicant shall show a contiguous building envelope on the plan that depicts a plot of buildable land sufficiently large for the purpose of building, well, septic and other related improvements.
But they must define it somewhere else in there, like, so that, I think that's the point of this section, is to not send people all over the zoning ordinance to try to figure out, okay, well, what does this, where is it?
Right, it's the requirement section.
Yeah.
Makes this law a good law. And I just kind of went through trying to figure out what all the things were that were necessary. And I, and the term upland soils also means, I believe, acceptable test pits. They don't even need to dig a test pit.
Well, they have to prove it, because otherwise they could just say, here's, here's our soils chart that was done by the USGS from 80,000 feet up, and it says it's, it's upland soils, it's like, no, but it's not, you know.
And I hear you, I threw that as a, a deal. But I, but no place here do we talk about test pits either. And it seems like that should be coming or something.
We don't have upland soils defined.
We shouldn't be regulating septic designs that's done by the state, it's redundant. Already being done by the state.
Well, I think, again, local control is a big piece, and that's Nottingham has asserted itself a lot of times in that, in many different ways, that the state could say one thing, but we can be, again, more restrictive than the state, and it's not severely more, we're not going to 100 feet or anything like that. It was, well, that's a separate piece. Again, we have two different things, there's two different things, conversations here. So, the first item was potentially to clean up that paragraph, E. We do have a second thing, that would be a second item, which would be to clean up the setbacks chart.
So can we look at the E and get that done tonight so that we can get it ready for legal review and get on a warrant article? At least have that done, because it's going on 8 o'clock.
Yep.
I'm going to turn into a pumpkin at 9:00.
Yeah, hard stop at 9:00, it's, it's agreed, so.
May I ask a question, Skip? So are you saying that the 200 and 200 foot square is redundant when we follow up with 3,000 square feet?
I wouldn't say it's redundant.
Why do I have to have it? Why do I have to have the 200? It's listed here, 3,000 square feet.
They're two different numbers, okay? One is 40,000 and one is 30,000. So I can't equate them as redundant.
Right.
But there's some, I, I think that OR, word that's in there, kind of in, separates the two things. You have to either have a lot that contains a 200 by 200 foot square fit for building.
Or.
And then, or the 30,000 that has a contiguous area lot envelope in which a house and septic system and all that kind of stuff. The house and septic system, as I read this, does not apply to the 200 foot by 200 foot buildable square.
You might be right. I mean, I've never heard, I've never heard of it.
That's not what we do.
I've never heard it interpreted that way, so nobody's ever come in and said, I don't want to show you 30,000 square feet, I'm going to show you 200 by 200 foot square and not show you any of the other stuff.
I agree. We, we've never done that.
I think that's maybe old plan, and again, that predates, way, way predates.
It's way back.
Us, but I know I've seen very old plans that had 200 by 200 squares prior from the 60s or 70s, 80s, somewhere in that ballpark.
Space.
So, so I don't know if there's a hazard taking it out, like, if we take it out and there's plan, things that were already approved that haven't been built yet, there's lots out there that on paper are, only have a 200 by 200 foot square, do we technically kind of somehow make them non-conforming, because, you know, what their plan is, isn't 30,000 square?
But that's at least 30,000, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it still meets the requirements, that's the way I look at it.
And they're approved, they're, they're in.
I was going to say, anything that's already approved is covered.
Just in light.
But, so you're actually looking to, if I understand you correctly, go with, under what Ed has done up for option either one or two, with removing some of it, have it read, each lot must contain a 30,000 square foot contiguous area in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, and you're saying not consisting of upland soils?
I think it should have consisting of upland soils, but the, the lot envelope in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, I have, is being deleted.
Okay, so take, so just square foot contiguous area consisting of upland soils, period?
Yep.
So, lot envelope and everything after it, except for consisting of upland soils?
Yeah.
And then the septic shall originate within the fit for building area, but may be extended outside. Is that okay or no?
I haven't figured that one out yet.
Okay.
To me, it tends to indicate, again, the upland soils to me indicates a septic system can be placed there. But the way this reads, it at least is identifying the fact that the septic system can be outside of the setbacks, which in my world, I deleted already, okay? From, from this particular, from E, okay? Because you already have a section down below that says setback.
Correct.
All right, so we, we don't do that. Now, the problem with that is that the 30,000 square foot contiguous area that today, we require them to shape inside of some set of setbacks, okay?
Those setbacks.
Typically those, yeah. And, and so that's, but, but those setbacks seem to come and go, I guess is what I'm saying. Some of them are 50, some are not.
75 feet setback from water, wetland poorly drained soils is also in there. So that's another layer in the confusion of that.
Yes, and I don't want to get into the, you know, necessarily identifying all that. So, can we live with at least 30,000 that doesn't involve setbacks?
What do you mean, doesn't involve setbacks? Doesn't involve the word setbacks, or it doesn't involve actually applying setbacks?
It doesn't, it, it's not inside of the applicable setback.
It's not inside?
You're confusing me there, Skip, because if we, if we say, all right, you've got a 30,000 square foot area that you can build on, that has to be within the applicable setbacks. And I can think of near my property, I don't have any neighbors, you go over my stone wall, there's nothing there. Today, someone wants to go and build there tomorrow, they put a septic system right on my stone wall, I probably won't be happy about that. So there should be some setbacks to protect everybody.
That's not what I'm saying here. This is just to prove the lot is buildable, okay? There are, now you get to three, and there's a bunch of setbacks that are required.
Yeah.
Most of which I don't necessarily understand. But anyway.
Yeah, sure.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get it separated enough that we can prove a lot and then go to the next section, three, and figure out what the setback is.
What if we took where it says requirements, going, go back over to page 3, 2A, no lot shall be less than two acres in area, and then we have that each lot shall, or must contain a 30,000 square foot contiguous area, period, end of story, then we wouldn't even have to have E. Do we need, do we need to have E if we state, if our, if our goal is to describe what a lot is?
That's essentially what I did, but I'm taking out that forever, however, or pre-existing, that I see, I have that coming out. So that's really all E is of that.
So why can't we just put it under, under requirements?
It still is.
It is.
That's A, B, C, E.
But, but, but put it, put it up with A instead of E.
That's fine, yeah.
And totally remove E.
So no lot shall be less than two acres, and must contain 30,000 square foot contiguous, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I kind of like it, it's two separate things, because I feel like it runs, but, that's splitting hairs, so.
I, I don't know.
I guess, you know, what is most clear, like, if we do this, you know, and for the public too, and when it reads in a warrant article, it's one thing when we're sitting here, but when it's a ballot, is it going to be confusing as to what we're doing? We're trying to just clean it up.
And, and we can state that in our, in our little blurb on it to clean up the confusion surrounding lot requirements. If we're saying no lot shall be less than two acres and, and each lot must contain, I don't know why it would be, why we really needed to be a full separate.
All right, so C, C2, Article 2, C2.
A.
Eliminate E. Amend A to say, no lot shall be less than two acres in area and must contain.
30,000.
It must contain a 30,000 square foot contiguous area lot envelope in which a house shall be placed consisting of upland soils, septic system shall, or do we want to say anything about the septic system?
Well, Skip is saying that we end it right at contiguous area, not even mention the rest of that.
Don't mention lot envelope either.
But I think that's.
But it would be upland soil, upland soil.
And we still have a setbacks on the lots of 50 feet where a house can't be placed.
We're not talking about that part now. We're talking about the requirements on a lot, that, of what a lot needs to be. It's two acres, 30,000 square feet of contiguous area consisting of upland soils, period.
Yep.
That qualifies as a lot.
I like it. I like it. I like it. Thank you. Simple, keep it simple.
Is, is that some, or is that, so the only thing by taking out where the house shall be placed, right now, that, that is letting developers know, that is the, of all our setbacks besides other sections, but of these setbacks, that is a controlling setback in determining your 30,000 square foot. It's not the driveway setback, it's not the accessory buildings setback, it's not the property, it's not the septic setback, it's the house. So by keeping where the house shall be placed, that keeps it clean in that, that lets them know, okay, that, that is my controlling measurement when determining my 30,000. Because otherwise, I, I know what happens, I mean, you, I saw it before, people came, come in and they say, oh no, we're going to do 20 and measure this way and, you know, skirt things, skirt things out, but it's meant to be 50 feet is the master's requirement.
The problem with the 30,000 contiguous without mentioning setbacks is that if you look at the front of the lot, 200-foot frontage and 50-foot setback, just that portion of it.
Maybe with 100 feet.
Yeah, of the 30,000 that it could be. If you, if, if you separate the setback portion of this area of upland soils.
Well, if you have people going to the minimum setback, so the 200-foot setback is the minimum, they're doing a frontage.
No, no, no.
So, but I'm saying.
I'm just, I'm just saying that the way I worded this.
Yeah.
Doesn't include setbacks, but you have to have the upland soils. So if the upland soils are all in the front of the lot, and you have a 50-foot setback in the front for the home, you're already taken away from that 30,000 square feet, a lot of square feet.
Well, Teresa's version doesn't have that, any setbacks in it, it just had 30,000 of upland soils.
Correct. And that's what I'm suggesting, but what I am saying is.
You're trying to say, you're, you're trying to say that any of those areas that are outside that now are beyond the setbacks, they should be able to add those back into their, their calculation.
They want to make sure there's enough space there that they can do what they want to do. I would kind of like to say 40,000 square feet, which is the 200 by 200 that's there, and that should cover any setback aspects that might come into play. I don't know.
Is there some, is there somebody here that can tell me what is upland soil?
Typically, well-drained soils.
Yeah.
Well-drained?
Yeah.
Gravel, a lot of gravel.
Gravel sand.
Good, good for septic systems.
Okay.
Even farmland soil, you know, prime farm.
I asked Siri, but I got no connection, it's taking forever.
Even your prime farmland soil will be upland soils.
That's what I was saying, it's kind of like.
If you want to leave E.
We're building a lot of shekel in the stock.
The house must be within the 30,000 square foot contiguous area. You could make it that, but I think when we're talking about what the requirement is for the lot, the lot just needs to be a 30,000 square foot contiguous area with upland soils.
But now we're, now we're tweaking that, so what, some of the, what we're, what's being discussed right now is going to allow more lots. So, any of these major subdivisions that have come in, they would have gotten more lots out of those, because if, if we don't count the setback area, you know, if they can say, no, we got 30,000 square feet, you know, yeah, once you take our, our setbacks and everything else, we lose this area, so we, now you're saying they don't, they don't lose that. They can't build in that area, but they don't lose it.
How are we taking away setbacks when you still have to, have to have them?
It's not taking, you're not taking away the setbacks. Right now, that area doesn't count towards their 30,000, so like.
So if you didn't have 30.
This area. So like, right now, if this is the lot envelope, you know, this area doesn't count towards, towards their contiguous area, their 30,000. So, but if you now say that this area does count towards their 30,000, you're going to get more lots.
I still don't see how that works when you still have to have a minimum of two acres.
Well, that's, that's for the normal lot. Most of the reason, I think, to go for the open space.
Is so they can do a lot more with less space. I get that.
But, but a lot of the.
Don't get me going on open space.
But even on the two-acre lots, even on the two-acre lots, a lot of the two, a lot of lots don't come before us as two acres because they don't, there's so many wetlands, there's steep slopes, there's other things there, so they have to make them slightly larger, two and a half acres, three acres.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Those are not.
But now they would be able to, but now they would be able to say, oh, now I don't have to do three, so now I can reconfigure this, reconfigure that, so now I've got three extra lots out of this, because. Because, you know, I, I only have to be thirty thousand square feet, not the way it's written now, so.
Yeah.
I think that, that'd be a pretty drastic change, but that's, that's me.
Yeah, I was hoping Blair was here tonight to kind of guide us through that, but...
He'd probably say it's up to us. I mean, it's, it's up to the...
It just, it, it just ends up being so confusing, so I try and make these just bullets that exist, and, and that's the way it worked for me.
Does Teresa's verbiage work, delete E and just add it to A, thirty thousand square foot?
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, except that these are a whole list of requirements, and I don't see why E is not a requirement if you just add the, the words she had, or delete most of E, but...
Well, I was...
Each lot shall have a thirty thousand square foot area.
It wasn't my idea, I was asking if that's what you were saying.
I, I see it as keeping a fifth item on this list.
Instead of adding it to A.
But if you get, if you get rid of...
But E or A is fine.
If you get rid of too much of the verbiage, like, a lot of this verbiage goes into the definitions for a reason, so it's, you know, again, if something gets appealed or whatever else, it's like, well, what does this mean? It's, they're, you know, we talk about lot envelope, and we define lot envelope very specifically. Um, so I guess, I don't wanna strip it down too much where we, cause a lot of that verbiage was put in for clarification, and for, for a reason. The only thing I, I thought, and I, I really appreciate, I do appreciate the, uh, you know, the extra, the extra push on this and extra, extra discussion on it, but, um, was to clean up the language around the septic.
Right.
Because right now, it shouldn't be where it is, because it, it sounds like it needs to be in the thirty K area, in that, but it, it doesn't need to be in the thirty K area. It should be partially in it at least, or, um, connected to it somehow, it shouldn't just kinda float off.
But the thirty K area, as it writes right now, has to be fifty feet from the side setback, and the septic has to be twenty feet, so you're now requiring the septic to be fifty feet away from the setback line, and it's...
No, but the second sentence here allows that. It has to orig- originate, I thought that was an interesting word, but I like it.
Well, there's, I mean, there's, the second, the second option was the other way, I, I thought, clarified it.
Actually, I like option two. And I, I, I think that reads really well, that, from what you wrote there. And if we're keeping, keeping the sentence reading all of the same, except we're changing out the septic system, I do, I like your option two.
So basically, the only reason I said, like, that verbiage in there is so you don't have this, like, nebulous four K area that's floating, completely detached from, from the, uh,
Yeah.
the thirty K, you know.
Can we decide on one of these tonight?
And then I broke out the, where it says, you know, however, or pre-existing, I just made that its own little sentence instead. I think that made it clearer.
Ed, what happens to open space developments with one acre or so, uh, this, is that...
So this would be what they continue to use for their yield plans, um, and then if they go, use a condition, use permit to do a open space, the open space development, um, zoning takes precedence.
Does open spa, I, I haven't memorized it yet, sorry.
That's okay.
Does open space say, we don't need a thirty thousand square foot area on a one acre lot?
Cor- well, correct, yeah.
Or should this say also that, um, a lot legal, you know, an existing lot and open space lots would be added to that?
No, cause open space says it's an entire section dedicated to it, cause it, it's a...
It's special.
The minimum lot area on a open space is thirty thousand square feet, and then forty five thousand square feet is the max for the, the lot size, but they have to go through the yield plan of this first.
Nobody ever has to guess what I'm thinking, okay?
Alright, so if it was option two, would it be each lot must contain...
Where is that, open space?
At least a thirty thousand square foot contiguous area, doesn't matter.
Each lot must contain a thirty thousand square foot contiguous area. I still think we should keep lot envelope, because we have it defined in it, again, when developers come in, where people come in and say, well, what does this mean? It, it, it explains, like, this is what...
And I didn't go through, through and see how many other times lot envelope is used. I'm hoping it's just these, this and a definition, but I think it's used a lot.
I'm sure it is, yeah.
Alright, so keep that. Alright, and I don't like the rest of the sentence.
Oh, lot envelope, four times.
Which sentence are you talking about now?
Well, the option two. You suggested that you thought the option two was, was good.
And you don't. That's okay. Go with one.
And so, in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, which I guess is okay, but now you're sending them someplace else, and, um...
Sending them someplace else?
Well, to some other aspect.
In sep, it's setback ordinances, right? Or, is it setbacks?
We say that septic shall be placed pursuant to state regulations, there are septic approvals, where the state approves septic systems and we don't. Why do we have to say it has to be partly in this area and partly not, and if it's not... Yeah, I, I think that...
Because the, because the town has, has, again, gone more restrictive than the state, so...
Why?
Because you can be...
Because you can be, it's...
You can't be less, but you can be more.
Well, how about even and equal? They're the experts that have designed these rules, regulations, septic, um, how groundwater and soils and percolation and house usages. They engineered this for dozens of years or more, who even knows?
Not, not without fail, though, I mean, they...
We know nothing about this.
What was it, all the, uh, septic systems, and was it Sophia that, that were approved and failed very quickly, cause they were, uh, a new type, and... So, again, I think the neighborly thing is, especially on conforming lots, I don't need to put my, my septic, you know, ten feet from, from my neighbor, theirs is ten feet from, from mine, so we have twenty feet between the septic. I don't think that we could design that way, but...
And can I just tell you that when people's septic systems fail, that's when they usually end up going before the zoning board, saying, I need to move it, and the only place is closer to my lot, lot lines. So if we're already allowing them to go closer, then they will have nowhere to go. So if you start further away, then at least you have some room for maneuverability, so.
I was told way back when, before mansions came to town, that the four K area was designed for two septic systems.
No idea.
And it, it may be just that it's the bigger, bigger homes now, I don't know, but...
Well, it's based on bedrooms, so...
I know, right.
Yeah, so two bedroom is...
Was a moderate home back then, but now everybody has to have their own bedroom and their own bathroom to go with their own bedroom.
So to the best of my knowledge, the state requires a four K area with two test pits in it, because that's what they wanna see for minimum area to put a septic system, tank, uh, leach field, et cetera. So it's, a four K is forty by a hundred, basically. A leach field might be twenty by twenty, or something like that, twenty by thirty, six hundred square feet, but there's a tank, and there's lines, and a D box, and other pieces and parts. So, the four K area is gonna, it's gonna be on our subdivisions unless it's more than, all plans unless they're more than five acres, then they don't have to, uh, apply for state subdivision approval. But if it's less than five acres, they have to apply for state subdivision approval, as well as our approval, and they will have to show that four K area, so that's, that's on the plan, it's done. It's gonna be there. It's gonna be there. It's, it's a state requirement, not ours.
If you wanna make the contention that the state is experts, I might give you a little pushback there. Okay, I'm, I'm not that trusting in state government.
Well, they can change the law anytime they want.
Anytime they want. And I'm listening to all of this, and I'm thinking, cause I asked the upland soil question, and I can only refer to the only thing I know, which is my property. And on my property, six feet down, is one big giant slab. And it goes for a mile, that nobody can build anything on. So, how did they put a septic system in my place?
Phil?
Raised septic.
Yeah.
See, for every problem, there's a solution. So if we were to restrict people because of these things, I don't think that's fair. There is a solution if you wanted to move forward with it.
And most people, when they move their septic system, instead of ripping out and putting all the soil in, it's cheaper just to move the septic there, and put a new septic system right on somebody's property line, their neighbors,
Yeah.
than actually taking out their old leach field, taking it all out, and starting with a fresh new one.
Right.
That costs too much money, so, and just like when a builder puts a house in, if you looked at all the houses, the builders, and all the plans we've been through over the years, and you go look and say, hey, the well's not where they said on the map, the septic's not where it says on the map, because they went with the cheapest route they could in order to do it.
Sure.
So, some of these things I've...
But, you what you're doing is you're making the case for why we should have some regulations to protect everybody in the community.
Absolutely. I mean, again, I, what we have in the house, sure, keep it the way it is.
Yeah. No, but I like Skip's idea of simplifying some of these things.
Oh, it simplifies, so makes it that people can read it a little easier. I wouldn't set, I wouldn't change any of them in order to make it more viable for somebody to, to do what they want. Just to make sure that it reads easier, you know? That's all, I'm, that's, when I'm sitting here listening to everything, that's everything that goes to, is we should put this so that it reads easier, but again, I don't believe we should change anything, all what we have.
So which one would you go with, option one or two?
If I had to choose, I'd go with two. Well, because I, I say that only for the reason that we said on the septic. The septic should be inside that envelope, but it doesn't all have to be inside the envelope, but it should be. Just because, again, the lots are gonna be different, the size is how they are, there's no perfect squares or anything like this. Some are gonna be longer, some are gonna be narrower, some are gonna be wider, whatever. But as long as you can show some of that septic inside that thirty, then we're okay. The whole thing to have to be inside, again, I don't think we have to. So that's why I'd choose number two.
I chose two as well, that's why I'm chuckling, cause he said he didn't agree with it.
So if we take out, if we take out the verbiage about the two hundred by two hundred, we should also update the definition of lot envelope, to remove it from there, too. So that'd be another piece of this, um...
Well, there's only four hits for lot envelope, by the way.
There's what?
Four.
Four hits. Two of them are in the definition itself.
The definition, yeah.
Okay, we know what this one is, where's the other one?
So there's three, yeah, sorry.
Parts one, two, three?
There it is. In the definition.
Mm-hmm.
For building permit?
But, so we're only looking at changing, getting rid of the two hundred by two hundred, not lot envelope anyway.
Right.
So...
Well, e- except if you read that, that's almost the same verbiage.
The E.
That is in E.
Right, but what he, we're saying is, if we get rid of two hundred by two hundred square foot from E, then we need to get rid of it in lot envelope.
Under the definition.
Yeah, just...
I'm just saying, get rid of lot envelope, totally.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm, I'm against, I'm against that.
But lot envelope can still read a minimum of thirty thousand...
It, it can, but see how lot envelope also includes depicted on a flat or building permit, which is being designated as a suitable area that can meet all local and state requirements. That's not in E. So it's lot envelope of lot envelope.
Well, the, actually, the biggest issue with this definition is that last sentence that caused so many issues with that case we had earlier.
That, that's true, but, but you defined lot envelope as this, and yet all of those same words are in E. If, if E isn't applicable thing, then say a suitable lot envelope, that's E. And then you go here, and you do all that stuff. I mean...
I don't know, I thi- I think, I don't know, I hear both sides, but it...
Don't say it in both places?
Unless, if it's exactly the same, okay, fine. But it's not the same. So which lot envelope is the lot envelope that you put in E? Is it this one, or is it the, all the other words around lot envelope and E? I don't know.
That's your opinion.
So the idea of a lot envelope is that there's enough area on a lot that you could put a house, a septic, and a well, and driveway?
That's the idea.
That's the idea.
Well, you need to have a driveway get to the lot envelope, yes.
Alright, well, I, I drive, I say driveway, shed, the, you know, whatever other junk, you know, there's turn, lot turnarounds around your garage, I mean, it, a thousand other little things, but...
Yeah.
The, the lot envelope is an area that depicts where the buildable, where that building, the well, and the septic can fit. That's, that's, that's what it, it...
To me, it's where it can sit.
Where it can sit.
Nutshell, but anyway.
This all sounds good, you know, but I, I, I'm listening closely, because I refer to Teresa, Ed, and especially you as well, Skip. You guys have met thousands of applicants. You know, you've had to go through so many of them. You have an experience, so what happens is, we could put some simple words up there, and applicant reads that, and the next thing you know, he's gone in seventeen different directions. And Ed has to deal with that. So I'm, I'm gonna refer to how Ed sees it.
Well, I appreciate that. So it's, it's a, but in that, and I guess that's what I'm trying to say, is I'm trying to utilize some of that, some of that input, and that's where, that's where we've gotten, how we've gotten to this point, was we've refined it because of input from, you know, applicants and the board. We added the chart because they found, people found that much easier, it's like, okay, we at least quickly see this, we know there's other, other things we have to be aware of. But we see that chart quickly, we, we know, okay, thirty thousand, and it's generally determined by these, we can go. You know, a developer, if it, again, I, I keep saying developer, zoning applies to, to all, uh, all land, but, um...
Homeowners.
But, you know, for a developer to come in, they're gonna look at that, they know there's wetlands and setbacks, things like that, that are gonna apply. So they, they know they'll have to look somewhere else for that, but it's, to Mr. Severance's point, could you just take E in, in, to say, lot envelope, and then they come to definitions, and we say what it is there?
Well, if, if the definition for lot envelope has important characteristics to it, then they should be in E, if, if you will.
Sure.
For that little minute thing that we're talking about.
But I think you end up making, then you end up making everything longer again, cause it's...
Yeah, I, I'm not looking for that.
So, yeah.
I'm looking to get rid of lot envelope.
But then you, so you'd have to make sure you don't lose, like, the fifty foot hourglass part, cause otherwise developers do come in and they'll try to show, look, it's this, oh, and then they get down to this amount, it's not even twenty feet, and then they go back out and...
But it's continuous.
But, but like, like, uh, one lot that we've had, but we can't say the name of, I guess, had twenty-six or twenty-eight thousand square feet, and was, kinda had that hourglass thing, and you, it's not where you're gonna put the wells, it's not where you're gonna put the house or septic, it still had a perfectly good area to build on, uh, which they could build on right today, as it said, but we couldn't approve it because of the shape of that and the definition. I mean, there's, there's already lot setbacks from the lot lines, right there. There's already setback from the wetlands, poorly drained soils, they're all defined. This, the, I was the guy that used redundant, this square thirty thousand is redundant because we already have setbacks. Why do you have a second set of setbacks that has things in it that are allowed outside of that envelope? So, I, I'm in favor with Skip as far as removing lot envelope entirely, and, um, and I think on, um, option two, can take thirty thousand square foot contiguous area, stop. Get rid of lot envelope, right there. If the septic should be in there, then, fine, let's see how that pans out. Actually, if it's not, if it's not said that that thirty thousand square foot is with or within the setbacks, or not outside the setbacks, just an area on the lot that... just an area on the lot that is buildable, then that septic system would be entirely in that area. And the septic has to be in a area where it has buildable soils, it can't be in a wetland, so.
So if we take out those pieces, the way it'll read, the way Skip got us down to, each lot must contain thirty thousand square foot contiguous area in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances. So that took out lot envelope.
Consisting of upland soils.
Consisting, I, I think out the house thing still, but I mean-
Yeah. So what you took out was lot envelope and two hundred square feet.
And in which a house shall be placed.
But if you take out the lot envelope, then you're getting rid of, you know, explaining that they can't use areas unfit for building in that calculation.
Yeah.
The setbacks and things like that.
Yeah.
So that definition, um, that, that's where that definition-
Is helpful.
Is helpful, where it pulls that, pulls that in. So, could you just strip out?
Okay, so it's interesting. I, I didn't see this before, but the fit for building. You look at that definition. Any land which is not classified as wet plain, wetland, watershed, protection area, drainage way, and does not have slopes of twenty-five percent or more, and where soil tests indicate suitability. That phrase includes our steep slopes.
Right.
That, well-
No, it does not.
Says it right there.
It-
Very luck. But anyway, I, I, I didn't, I, I just stumbled on that when I was looking up-
Thanks, Skip.
So maybe it's the thirty thousand contiguous areas fit for building? And get rid of lot envelope.
Yeah.
And that takes care of the, the, um, uh, doesn't do septic. Well, where soil tests indicate suitability, so that's good.
Yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna be in that upland area anyway.
Yeah.
So we could say, you're saying, take E, maybe you're not saying this. Take E and say, and all the verbiage that's there right now, and we could just say, each lot must contain a lot envelope. And then we have the definition of lot envelope that later on that explains, you know, what that is.
Well, I think what I'm saying now, I'm sorry. And I enjoy this discussion, but, each lot must contain at least thirty thousand square foot contiguous area fit for building.
Period?
I think period, or, yeah, period, because that would, that would already be upland soils, according to our definition.
So we say that, then that definition lot envelope means nothing because we've, we're not using it anywhere else that. So all the, the, so any restrictions or anything protections that are in that are gone. So the hourglass shape specifically, um-
Specifically, that would not exist anymore unless we add that in.
In the fit for building and, and things like that.
Fit for building, yeah.
So you, you'd lose significant amount of, of stuff if, if you don't keep that verbiage in there.
I think what I'm hearing though from you, Ed, is that a lot of what is said in these definitions has happened because of cases we've seen-
Mm-hmm.
Experiences.
That we've had, so the, really, the only thing that absolutely should change for E is removing septic system from that paragraph, because it's not, it doesn't meet the requirements anymore. It's been moved, moved out.
It's been made less restrictive.
But the rest of it is important so that we don't have the same case issues come up again. Is that right?
That was my understanding, yes.
Yeah, the idea.
Pardon?
That was, that's the idea.
So then, why would we continue to beat our heads about changing these more when really the only thing we need to get rid of is and septic system?
You're going to make a change to this anyway, you might as well go pulling and make a change.
As long as those changes don't impact us later on a board where we're seeing cases where builders want to come in and do the hourglass shape, which we're saying, no, you can't, or where they're wanting to make multiple house lots out of
Yeah.
a lot that really should only have one on it or two. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I do. But when you read E right now, you have a capability of fit for building, which is what we just read, or the capability for lot envelope. In that one paragraph, in the first sentence, is two different conditions that you can go by. Not a good thing to do.
No, they're two additive conditions. So you have the, the fit for building and, and the lot envelope, so lot, is that what you're saying?
No, no, it has an or in between them.
For, oh, the two hundred by two hundred?
Yeah.
I'm fine with getting rid of that, that, that's, I think-
Building, okay, so if, that paragraph's bad just to begin with.
But we talked about already agreeing with the two hundred by two hundred square fit for building coming out, and just going with a thirty thousand square foot.
Yep.
I'm sorry, but I, but I was thinking we should keep the-
That, that's fine. That means we delete fit for building paragraph, I believe. Uh, definition, I'm sorry. But when I read it, I thought there was some good meat on that.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want to, I don't think we should get rid of that verbiage. I don't think we should get rid of the-
Just get rid of the two hundred by two hundred-
I think we should get rid of the two hundred by two hundred square foot from there and from the definition of lot envelope.
Do we have it say, each lot must contain a thirty thousand square foot fit for building contiguous area? Consisting of upland soils?
It says that a, a area must contain upland soils at the end, which conflicts with potentially fit for building, because, does that? Anyway, just, I, I want to just point out that it says, in which a house shall be placed, and it, that house might be better said to be a building or structure. What if it's a garage, a shed, or some, something else? Don't those all need, need setbacks? Structure improvements or something.
So, here's my cleaned up verbiage for, so, change it to, each lot must contain a lot, each, I don't like the word lot being in here twice, but, each lot must contain a lot envelope of thirty thousand square feet contiguous area, square foot contiguous area fit for building in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, and the septic system shall at minimum be partially contained within this area, but may extend outside as long as setbacks are adhered to. This area must consist of upland soils.
Yep.
And you're keeping lot envelope, right?
Yeah.
And just getting rid of two hundred by two hundred square foot. And that says square fit for building on it anyway, doesn't it? Oh, this one, got it.
Can we, can you go back to lot envelope definition, please?
Is that law, lot envelope?
Here. The, the definition, sorry, the-
She got, we got, oh.
The third, the third one. There you go.
All right, so lot envelope also has that two hundred by two hundred square.
Right, which means we need to take care of that.
Yeah, so the second part of this, the second part of this would be to amend the definition to remove two hundred, that, so it start, it would say, it would read and said, a minimum of thirty thousand square foot contiguous, uh, that would just take out the two hundred.
What does building permit mean in there? Why is that there? That's confusing to me. Are we talking about subdivision of lots or?
No, not necessarily, because it's, it's any zoning, so any lot that's post nineteen ninety-four, um, so it would be when they go in for their building permit, so it might not be stuff coming before the board, but it might be an existing lot that's out there.
Well, then they have their own existing rights, and don't, we can't put a lot envelope on an existing lot of record. I don't think building permit should be in there.
So again, no, it's not, it, it's, so, there, the zoning that's here now, this would pertain to any, any lot that's not a pre-existing non-conforming lot of record.
Okay.
So whatever the savings clauses that we have in, in the-
Right now, because that's what we keep here, requirements.
Yeah.
For residential agriculture.
Yeah, so it's not making it any-
So just remove the two hundred by two hundred and this will complete.
The-
Skip's war on or.
Yeah, yes. So that brings-
It's going one way or the other, yeah.
So while we're at it, I thought this would be a good time to address the commercial industrial zone. The same section, pretty much, it's, it's, um,
Where are we looking in here?
I'm getting there.
Tell me, sir, where should we go? Ms.?
Uh, B two, B two.
Page six.
B, B two? I gotta go back.
Option three.
Okay, we're now, I don't know if I'm getting some-
B is wetland conservation?
Yeah.
E. Page, page six. Uh, page six, Article two, E, um, commercial industrial zone four, uh, was that, sorry, commercial industrial zone.
Two B three.
So the, uh, two, B.
Three.
Three. So this section has a couple of, so this was just copied out of the other section, shouldn't be, because it's a commercial zone. And residential was pulled out of that district by a town vote, um. So, but we, so the reference, to me, the reference to a house is probably not a good idea. So I thought we could clean up the language to say, each single parcel of land is required, serving no more than two lots, instead of two residences.
Oh, I see, you're, okay.
The back lot section should be removed, because there's, there's just no, um-
Where are you at, Ed?
It doesn't exist, yeah. Where am I at? I don't even know.
Page seven.
I keep hitting the wrong thing, I lost.
Yeah, two residences, okay, B one, two, has the two residences. That should be two lots.
Yeah, well, that's what I was trying to figure out, is what, what do we change it to? It shouldn't be residences.
Right.
The reason I think lots makes sense is because you're in a commercial zone, and even if you get something where they're putting in, you know, multiple, uh, commercial park, for example, and so it's one lot, but it's got six different, um, structures. I think that would still work for E nine one one. Because basically what you want to avoid, or my understanding was it, you know, more than two houses on a, on a driveway becomes a road. You know, for nine one one and everything else. So that's why we have that verbiage in there, but for commercial industrial, I thought two lots made more sense.
Were two, two structures, two uses? Not residences, and what if-
Yeah, exactly.
Residences and a commercial.
Just two lots?
I have a house and I have my repair garage.
I don't think, you can't do the house in the commercial zone.
Not anymore, right. So would, if we change it, would it create a problem for anything that's existing there now? No, I think the only thing they were to expand it, yeah.
Correct.
I keep losing my page.
And then three.
Did we decide to get rid of that however, a non-conforming lot portion of those of E or three in this case?
We can't go backwards. Oh, to, to make it, the way I wrote it, I believe so. That's my, to make it a separate like paragraph, or not paragraph, but standalone. I'd kept it in there, but, um-
Make it F.
Sure. So we jump backwards.
Backwards?
I was letting Alana know, because she was tracking it.
No, don't.
Okay, so, this hadn't come up, but again, this is something private, should be cleaned up at the same time. So that was the first part.
Right, this part. In that commercial zone.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
Actually, it's right there, number three.
So we could get rid, we can get rid of that two hundred by two hundred square foot thing here as well.
Yep.
And change it, basically, I got the structure instead of house.
Yeah.
So, but we can match the language from the, the prior change that we just did. Put it here, but change house to structure.
And then that however.
And structure is defined.
Well, is it two structures or is it two uses? I mean, you could have a house and a garage, those are two structures.
Can't do a house there, though. This is, this is for going forward.
Right.
So somebody coming to us now on a commercial lot is not going to be able to do a house, because it's not, it's not houses, it's commercial that goes there.
Of ninety-nine lots along Route four, eighty of them have single family or-
We're saying going forward.
Okay.
That change.
Huh?
It, it used to be commercial slash residential zone, now it's a commercial.
Correct.
And that was done by a vote of the people of the town.
Correct. So that's why I'm saying, somebody coming-
Subdivisions on Route four.
Right. Can we put elderly housing up there?
No.
Why?
Depends on the, well, I would say it depend, it probably depend on the type, you know, if it's-
For use, isn't it? If you're more than five apartments, I go to the bank and I loan them to commercial loan.
So you're, it's unclear when you say elderly housing, that's a different-
That's apartment buildings.
That, that, that's not, you're, so there's assisted living. There's assisted living, which is commercial and a commercial type development, but, um, you know, like the condos that went up on Route four, if those are individually sold, you know, that's multiple condos, but someone could buy each, all of those and own all of them and rent them out. And it's technically commercial, but it's, it's not, it's, it's still considered residential. It's not the, the same. I think elderly housing is, uh, needs to be defined.
One of the drawbacks we had on there too was the fact that when there was proposed buildings, uh, businesses on there, the people that were in the residential on one side did not want the lights of the building, did not want the traffic of the building, did not want the trucks of the building, didn't want to hear the noise the buildings could make, so there was a lot of pushback. So that's why the whole thing came up of why we went and said, okay, no more of this, because the more residential we put, the less chance of any, uh,
Is this?
commercial coming into it.
And the less chance you're getting a commercial in the town, because that is the best corridor that we, we have for it.
That's why we basically, why, why the reason why it came up.
And, and the reason this is a little bit different too from the other section is the sep- the setbacks are defined differently in the, in this zone, so, um, so I felt fine with just saying structure, because we do define what structure is, and it, it would make sense for this, um, because there's no carve-out like there is in the, uh, in the residential section. You know, difference between a, a house and a, um, you know, a shed, for example, or a barn.
And can we just remove non-conforming from there, though, because it wouldn't be, we wouldn't have a non-conforming lot going forward for a commercial business? Because those are all lots that aren't two acres.
I can, well, if the board feels that way, we can definitely ask, ask, uh, council if, if we're allowed to do that, or if that, there's some, I don't know if there's any kind of reason we couldn't.
And commercial? What, how would we have a non-conforming lot for commercial? They wouldn't have the space for anything if we had a non-conforming lot. They wouldn't be able to put a structure, a, a well or- They wouldn't be able to put a structure, a well, or any of that in a non-conforming lot for commercial businesses, is what I'm thinking. Almost all of our non-conforming lots are around the lake, anyway.
But if you.
And if you're a real developer anyways.
Yeah, big time.
If you had a house that was in the commercial zone, after it was, that was there before the commercial zone was there, that would still fall in as a non-conforming.
But they wouldn't be coming before us for anything related to this ordinance. How would they be coming for, before us for any commercial business on a, a non-conforming lot that has a house on it? There's no space for it, that's what I'm saying, I don't see how it applies.
I hear you, I guess I look at it and say.
It'd be a very unique situation.
Well, there are houses that have, there's an antique shop, if it's still there, there's a couple auto repair shops with houses, a doggy daycare thing or something, I think, you know, there's businesses there with houses and, and some out structures, too.
But they're not coming before us to add anything to their, their lots, and even if, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's like, this is looking at a lot where they're coming before us with plans to add something to a lot. If you've got a non-conforming lot that you've already got a house on, on Route four, I don't think you're going to come before us asking to build something for a business.
If the house was torn down, would it, would it, they were coming in, it still could be that, right?
It's still in the commercial zone, I mean, yeah, they would have to get a site plan if they're doing a commercial thing, whatever, whether it's conforming or non-conforming, doesn't matter.
Well, it does, because I'm talking about the non-conforming at this point.
But I guess, and I'm trying to look, so I think the important part is, is where is this language within the ordinance, so, it's not a carve-out, it's not its own thing saying that, it's, it's not a protection from all the requirements of that district, it's just saying, it's just given, the way I read it anyway, because it's part of three, that it's just giving the protections from the thirty thousand, the thirty thousand square foot area. So I, is there any negative of taking that out? Because again, these, most of this was just copied from one section to the next, even though it wasn't applicable.
I, I guess if you leave it, it's no skin off my nose, I don't really care, I just figured we're working on it, and I don't see how non-conforming fits within the commercial district.
I think we could, so if we, if we move forward with this, what my suggestion would be is that I would, I would send it to the council with that question, say, we would like to clean this up, you know, and potentially remove this, because it doesn't seem to have relevance to that district. You know, is that opening us up to a problem or, or, or anything? And if the council says yes, you should keep it in, we keep it in. But otherwise, you know, I think take it out, make that, you know, recense it shorter.
Well, I, my quick dumb opinion is, there's ninety-nine lots up on, up there, and I actually have researched this extensively, and a lot of them are, are under two acres, you know, some are an acre or whatever, so if they have a house on it, and it's an acre, and it's a non-conforming lot, because it has an acre, and it's in a commercial zone, and they want to tear down that house and put up some sort of business, they need to have a thirty thousand square foot envelope.
They could.
On a one acre lot, let's say.
They could go to zoning for relief.
So.
Well, even if, even if they don't meet that, so, okay, fine, you know, they, they don't have to do the thirty thousand, they're still going to have to meet the hundred foot setbacks from all boundaries to do, to switch to commercial. Because that's not, that, that non-conforming piece isn't giving them protection from A, just giving them protection from, from a specific piece of the lot sizing.
So if you want to build a business with that house, well, you're going to have to buy six or seven houses next to it.
Okay, there goes the cost of the business, and why aren't there any businesses up there right now, that's, that's wondering.
Never was, very few.
Keeping on the other way it always been.
Where people pass through and never see it.
There wasn't, there weren't any there when it was pre-zoning either, so it's not.
Chris, I don't want to slow you down, you're in the pro-growth mode, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that, that's okay, that'll mix, some of us are not, but that's why we're all here, that kind of mix is well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, obviously, and that was the whole point of like, taking residential out of that district was really to try to focus the commercial, and make it say, we really want commercial in this area.
To make it more desirable.
And we did get, and we have since gone some commercial in that area.
Okay, as we, as we talk about this, I can't help, I keep envisioning Mr. Fredrickson's house. Do you know who he is?
Nope.
Yes, you do, it's the movie Up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right, he's got that little house surrounded by all these skyscrapers, you know, because he wasn't going to give up his piece of land, and that almost sounds like that's what we're building here. Oh, you can have that commercial house, but around it, I mean, that, that residential but around you is going to be all commercial. Clear it up, make it all commercial.
Yeah, might happen someday, somebody's building a lot, they're just going to buy the house up.
Yep.
But we do at least add quite a bit of buffer, well, a hundred feet down or fifty feet from all sides, which isn't, you know, if it's your house, it's not going to feel like very much, potentially, but it's, it's more than zero, and more than ten, so if, someday we hit the skyscrapers, I don't think I'll be alive for that one, who knows?
So on another subject, I don't know if it's time to say this or not, but.
You've got five minutes.
Okay, we, we, we have, we have no elderly housing, affordable housing, workforce housing in the town, these are mandated by the state, and we're never going to get to talking about these things, so I'm just going to throw right on the table. How about if we made a zone, maybe it's two hundred feet from the center line of Route four, where multifamily, elderly housing, higher density housing, little houses, apartments can be built. If people don't care that there's twenty-five, twenty-four condos up there right now that generate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of value taxes to the town, at their build out, they're getting about six thousand per unit on the twenty-four condos up there, most people don't even know they're up there. And what if we had a fifty unit elderly complex there, picking a number out of my hat here, fifty, who cares? It's on Route four, people are just driving by, who cares? Kind of what I'm saying, but that fifty units could generate, would be assessed typically at, they're cost about two hundred and fifty thousand per unit, so there's twelve million dollars worth of real estate, which generates the two hundred and forty thousand dollars of tax income to our town. We're talking about making, creating our tax base and meeting the needs of our people. What if we made a proposal to put some housing in that commercial zone that is stagnant right now?
Well, I think you're on the right track, there's nothing wrong with creating a zone to do that, but then what else, what other infrastructure is going to be required? If you're going to put four hundred people in that building over there, do we need a water tower? You know, I mean, all kinds of other stuff comes up, do we have to be closer to a hospital?
The all property, you know, like in Deerfield, they, they just approved twenty-eight units of elderly housing, right up by Mr. Mike's, and there's another twenty units that was just put in, right on Church Street, off of Church Street, Uplum Street, and it's very nice and subsidized, it was paid for with grants, so it's, you know, people have affordable rents that live there, and it's non.
Close.
Intrusive to the community.
I think it would be reasonable if one, one day, one meeting that we have, we put it on the agenda, and we have a reasonable conversation.
And some of that, again, I think that's part of the housing grant and things like that, some of those are such bigger, I think they're important discussions to have, but they're much bigger than where we're at right now, you know, and, and that's going to be potentially the community involvement, community engagement, you do a TIF district, things like that, you know, how do you, how do you do that? Because I know Deerfield also went like three acre minimums instead of two, you know, in a lot of, in a lot of the town, but they might have made a specific part.
Deerfield does allow twenty units of elderly housing on any lot, so this twenty units is on a six acre.
We allow workforce housing, so I don't know how they define their elderly housing, we allow workforce housing, we've had it in our ordinance, we give a density bonus, and we've had zero people apply for it.
Oh.
Because again, if you could sell the house for eight hundred thousand dollars.
Why are you going to build one?
Or why are you going to be one that's, that's restricted to, you know.
The density bonus is on fifty acres or more, how many fifty acre lots are up on Route four? Or anywhere that people are.
It doesn't apply, because it's not residential, so.
Right, right.
But it used to, and nobody, nobody wanted it, and there's hundred acre lots.
We need to advocate for this for the people of this town, you know.
And we understand, you made that point, we've applied for a grant for it, again, it's part of the plan, we can't just willy-nilly just say, snap our fingers and do it, because it takes so much energy and effort to do it right for the town and, and the applicant. You know, you, you got to make sure, you know, again, is it a TIF district, is it, you know, do you do it here, do you do it there, how do you do it? How do you define it so it doesn't, you know, go, go sideways? I think it's a very important thing, but that, that is why something like that grant, hopefully will help us hash out. I think the only other thing I had, definition of structure in the zoning ordinance, oh, never mind, I just brought the definition in there so that we knew what it was. Last thing I had was the, the chart, the charts, so we talked about keeping those in.
Yes.
But adding, pulling, pulling out the septic, putting its own line, making it clear, and then changing the, the pre-existing.
On that third one. You said on the third one?
Yep.
Where it says septic systems?
Right, so we would actually add a fourth.
Line.
A fourth liner, so the third one would say between side and rear property lines and accessory buildings.
Period.
Twenty feet, twenty feet, next row, between side and rear property lines and septic systems, ten and twenty. We talked about dropping it to ten for the pre-existing non-conforming.
If, if ten feet is fine for a pre-existing, why isn't it fine for all of the lots?
It's not fine, so, so there's dealing with something that was less than ideal and was done probably with very little standards, sixty years, eighty years ago, we, you've got them, you got to deal with them, they're changing over, other towns completely restrict, like the number that can be converted over to homes, because you could be a mile down a dirt road with no other access, you know, you're creating these, 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 these safety emergency hazards, because there's no, you know, but it's trying to alleviate, okay, well, if it's, if they're going to the ZBA and we're just creating red tape form, but on all other lots that are two acres and have all the setbacks, you know, there's, I think the better practice is, is saying, yeah, you know, give a little more distance, gives you that space to do a replacement system if you need to, keeps you a little more neighborly, because again, you might be, you might be conforming, but you're butting the lot that's been there since eighteen hundreds, that's house is close to the line, you know, but I put my septic system right next to theirs and.
Which is an improvement over the straight pipe you had to the creek.
Yeah.
So did we actually, we made some changes on a couple of things, should we circle back and go check, 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 and vote, and make amendments and finish this, so we don't have to keep kicking this dog?
Sure. Yeah, and, and obviously, so anything we do now, you know, I could send it, it would just be to send it to, if we say yes, then we could say send it to council, that doesn't mean we're going to put it forward for warrant articles, we would still have to have public hearings and all that, but it just gets us prepared to do that in, in a better place than, than doing it in January. So, what I have listed for potential changes would be to amend article two, C two, E, number three, just change it to each lot must contain a lot envelope of thirty thousand square feet contiguous, square foot contiguous area, fit for building in which a house shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances, and the septic system shall at minimum be partially contained within this area, but may extend outside as long as setbacks are adhered to, this area must consist of upland soils, and then starting a new sentence or making this F, is there a preference, Megan, the?
I think it should be F.
So F, a non-conforming lot shall be exempt from these provisions, provided it was legal under the provisions in effect immediately prior to the passage of this ordinance, or substantial amendments thereto, where approval can be granted without substantial detriment to the public, you know, blah, 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 so it's just cleaning up the start of that and making it its own.
What about change, I thought we were going to change the word house.
Not, that's for the.
This is a residential.
That'll be a second, that'll be a second one, yeah, this is for the residential piece. Is there a danger if we do make that F, because does that only apply to E right now? I think if you make it F, then it makes it sound like that non-conformity protection applies to everything that's in there.
Well, can we say that F, non-conforming lots, but that's already what we're saying, right, non-conforming lots? And you can leave it as pre, however.
Yeah, I think, I think just make it a separate.
Paragraph.
Sentence, yeah, okay. So non-conforming lot shall be exempt from these provisions, so instead of saying however, it's just taking that, moving it, and, oh, and I've got this tracked on mine, well, not tracked, but I've got it written down.
So mostly getting rid of the two hundred by two hundred square?
Yeah, and then pulling out the septic, making it clear that that's, that's not the calculation.
And Doug, if you like, we could put, in which a house and its accessory structures or some verbiage to it, because there are many other structures, garages, barns, whatnot.
No, let's not reinvent it, leave it as house, yeah.
So that, that's option, so that's that one, do we? I'll just read all of them, and then we'll say, we can take a vote and say, yeah, let's send that to council, send this to. Also amend the definition of lot envelope by striking out two hundred by two hundred foot square or. And then going into the commercial industrial, I think it's B two, change residences to two lots. And then for the definition of three, where it says, not definition, where three, where each lot must contain a two hundred by two hundred square, again, strike, strike that, and leave it to the thirty thousand square foot, in which a structure shall be placed to meet all existing setback ordinances.
Okay.
Do we know it?
And then potentially, we'll get verbiage, we'll, we'll send it both ways, potentially striking out the non-conforming lot, if it doesn't actually make sense to have it in this section, sorry.
That's okay, I didn't mean to interrupt you. And let, we'll finish this and then I'll ask my question. And then the chart is the last piece, right?
I believe so, one sec, I just want to strike this out, I've got it. And then, sorry, and then the last one was, the last one was to amend the setback chart in article two, C three, C three, A, in two ways, reduce the set, reduce the minimum distance for, for septics in the pre-existing non-conforming lots of ten feet, and then add that, that extra row for septic specifically.
And twenty feet on all of the lots.
So did you want to make your motion now?
Okay.
I was going to say, yeah, I've got, well, I've got one, one more piece under that commercial industrial zone, so I guess we can do the motion on this now if you want, but was to get, do we want to consider removing the backlot language from that section, because per the definition in, in U, which is back, backlot, section, section C, it doesn't apply to the commercial industrial zone, anyway. So.
More cleanup.
It, it could, though.
No, it can't, the definition of backlot is in the, is, it specifically states, in the.
I'll wait a moment, go forward with that. Our discussion this evening resulted in what you just read?
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained, all right, the motion carries, six, six, zero.
My other question was, is the two hundred by two hundred feet mentioned anywhere else in the zoning ordinance where it would need to be removed from? We've checked lot envelope, but I don't think we checked two hundred by two hundred.
Nope, three, three places.
Okay, so it's not going to be messing anything else up, I just wanted to make sure we were-
No, it's a good point, I'll go through a little in more depth on that and check that.
Okay. When will we have another working meeting so we can discuss ADUs, because we didn't get to that at all?
We didn't get to that, we finished steep slopes. So we have to either schedule another meeting or application deadline for December is November 18th, which is a week away, less than a week away, we haven't received any applications. So if we don't get any, then that December 11th would be another open meeting.
Okay, that would be fun.
December 11?
Yeah, December 11th is our, is our next scheduled meeting anyway.
What is the time deadline that we need to have these?
The SB2 schedule?
Yeah.
Ah, got it.
Everybody has that municipal calendar in their mind.
Yeah, and towards the front, thank you for putting that in here, Alana, because I know we go back to it 100 times.
I just don't remember what it was.
I think January 4th is, is the posting, so that December meeting would be the important one to.
Yeah.
At least have verbiage and know what we're moving forward with. And then to post the, the thing for.
So we have to nail it down.
At that meeting, yep.
Okay.
So if, I went to this housing meeting and someone that was there was, it'll be brief. Was, was on Manchester Planning Board and they end up not being able to find a house in Manchester, so they had to move up to Concord and had to drop off the board, but one of the, up on a questionnaire thing, one of the things that she said was interesting was that the, the planning board members in Manchester even are the ones that suggest a lot of changes to the zoning based upon what they see as opposed to the public or something else, so I thought that was interesting. I would like to maybe make a proposal to add a elderly housing provisions in our ordinance, how do we go about doing that? Jump in there on December 11th and conjure that up in one night?
I don't think it's gonna exist, I'm telling you, that's what I'm saying, that's a whole new thing that's being thrown in. We're having a hard time doing stuff that we already had language created for us, that we've already tweaked, you know, sort of bring in something like that, unless you have something that's kind of plug and play that you're proposing, that, that's, we've got verbiage and it's easy to understand and where do we insert it?
I would steal it from another town, I've already got the zoning ordinance, already two of them plotted right now.
Yeah, so I guess, so you're, you're welcome to, to send that to Alana and she'll share it to the board and if, and we can take a look at it for the, that December meeting, but right now, what, what we created for a list of what we were gonna focus on this year, that, that wasn't it, so I think that's something for, that's gonna be for next year.
2025, it may, we need to look at having it into our master plan too, we could have that as a.
It would be a piece of that too, yeah.
It's already in our master plan to add, you know, accessory dwellings, open space, elderly housing.
We've done it, we've done that.
For all the needs of all the people in the town, affordable housing, workforce housing is a state law, it's already in.
We, and we have workforce housing, it's in our, in the zoning ordinance, I think 20 times, maybe, maybe more than the verbiage for workforce housing, so we already have a lot of that, we've done a lot of that work already. Adding that in the open space and adding the ADUs may get less restrictive, that's all, that's all been done over the last, you know, 12 years.
The bigger thing I think is finding a.
Or it's been, it's been worked on, I'm not, I'm saying it's not.
Someone wants to build them, they don't come before us for that. You see anybody come for us before that, they all wanna build these $800,000 homes.
It's interesting to hear, it's interesting to hear if Deerfield is getting some kind of elderly housing in those sections, cause.
Well, they already had one, they've had one there for a while. So.
They have, they have four right now.
It's not like that's new to them.
No, but I'm saying like, so what, but we've always, when we've had developers come through before and talk to us, it, it was always, no one's gonna do it here because you don't have, you're too far from hospitals, you're too, you don't have the services.
There's, there's other factors, but one of the big factors is a two acre per unit what, buildable area, you know, for every, and 30,000 square foot envelopes for every single unit that you build is very restrictive, someone that, you know, you build an elderly apartment with 24 units, you don't need 48 acres, those old people are, you know, they're walking around their, to their car or whatever, they don't, you know, who's gonna maintain that 48 acres?
But you could add or insert an I into the listing of permitted uses.
We're gonna have that one on.
That would be housing in the commercial, I mean, they're expensive.
And I'm sure that would get some sort of exemption on the two acres per unit.
It's gonna be the same thing as what we're saying.
You're right, that's unreasonable, 40,000, you know. You can get an exemption for that, but it sounds to me like we have other things that we have to do first. We'll eat that elephant later.
So we have, I just wanna make it clear for this piece, I think it's important that if we're in a section, if we can clean, clean it up, so the commercial industrial under 2B1, that's where it mentions backlots, each lot shall have a minimum contiguous front inch, 200 feet, including a curb cut for group access. I think we should strike out except with extent regard, just end it there, because backlots does not.
Apply.
Apply to the zone.
Yeah.
You did mention that, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so, so that's a second separate area, but it would be done at the same time. Got it, alright. Approval minutes, we'll, I say we table those, I haven't had a chance to read them.
Just needs to be.
I know there's some, some changes.
That was in there, I mean. We were, I was voting on this, my motion was for this, all of this.
Yeah, yeah.
And you included that.
The backlots?
Backlot.
Got it, so minutes, I say we table? Tables, tables. Quick, quick updates around the room.
I was just in Arizona and I was, we were renting an Airbnb and Chris, you would love this place, it is fabulous place, but every house is two feet from the next house. With a block wall seven feet high, you don't see your neighbors, you don't, unless you go out in the morning and, hey, how you doing, going off to work, it's not going off to work, but it's 20,000 acres of that.
Arizona villages.
Yeah.
It is sprawl to the max, they call it a master planned community, but it did have lakes, it did have, it has over, I think it's 65 miles of trails and stuff that go out through the desert and everywhere you're there, they got two elementary schools, a high school, a fire department, a police department, a shopping center, all that stuff within this area that isn't, it's part of a town or part of a city of Goodyear. And I got a bunch of brochures, I'm not gonna be living there, but the lady was very nice and gave me all sorts of brochures, we're in the process of building a thousand units next year. And.
So what, what are you saying, Skip? What, what are you saying, Skip, so it's really nice, but don't go here?
Chris, go move down there, you want new housing.
I don't wanna see you here, but this development is 20,000 acres, I mean, you can only do that realistically in Arizona.
Well, I mean, again.
The state is 10 times the size of ours, I mean, they have 20,000 acres.
All of New England and Pennsylvania will fit inside Arizona.
Yeah.
And, and they're, they're talking about the sprawl in the West Valley, which is where this is, a phoenix, and, but they already went the east side, they already went south, Tucson and all that area, and they can't really go north yet, but they're going west and it's, no, it's insane. I, I'm sorry, that's not, not again.
We, we do have 60 for separation between multifamilies and buildings here and, you know, multiple lots, so, not two feet, but, you know, maybe, maybe that.
It's a quick update, so.
I have a large package of information that I'm putting together with regards to changing zoning, or making some amendments to encourage housing for our needs of our people, so I'd like to say I'm probably gonna send it up to Alana, I've almost done, I have stolen zoning from other towns, I've looked at other towns, other projects that are out there, my taxes went up 12.2% last year, I'm unhappy about that, if they continue at 12% for the next six years, they will double, and in 12 years from now, they will quadruple, I have a problem with that.
And the towns you're looking at.
Pardon me?
What are the taxes doing in the towns you're, you're looking at? That are doing, they're doing, I don't think any of them are going down.
No, no, they're not going down.
I think, I think with its development and everything else, they'd frick out of water and had to put up another thing.
Yeah, so taxes, taxes, taxes are a function of tax base and spending.
I understand.
So the tax base stays the same and the spending goes up with inflation, like it's gonna, then your taxes go up. You could raise the evaluation, which their town is planning to do next year, you could raise all of our values, well, look at the tax rate went down or stayed the same, but when you multiply your higher valuation times the lower tax rate, your taxes are still going up, so unless we increase the tax base in this town, we're not gonna relieve this tax burden that is gonna be oncoming, we, 12% last year, in six years, it will double, your taxes will double in six years at that rate, it's.
It's doubled in the past seven years, we already know that, right? It doubles all the time.
Yeah, it, it's clearly you're very passionate about it and I appreciate that, you could share all the information that you want, I guess, I think you want things to happen immediately and it's just not gonna happen, it's not the way the board works, it's not the way the town works, it's not the way the RSAs allow us to, to work. I think we have a lot of things that are in place, that are coming in place and, and a lot of it's hinging on that, that grant, but beyond that, even if that fails, having some of the budget things we've done, but we're restricted as well, if that grant fails and, you know, we can't add a line item of $10,000 to, to, you know, to get a planner in to do public outreach and to help us rework a lot of things, add these different zones or, or change things, so, because the town may vote that down because of the tax part. So I think we're, we're getting there and we're moving that way, and I think there's a lot of pieces that are hopefully gonna help us, you know, look at a lot of those things better, but. You know, we gotta be careful with like cherry picking from certain towns, because that, that might not be what our town wants. It might work for one town, but not, not here, Manchester's different.
Deerfield, it's a rural town with horses, they, they, they want the small town feeling just like we all want, every 238 towns, 17 big cities of those little towns in the state, they all have right in their purpose, keep our small town feel and ambiance, whatever the hell that is, but, you know, there, there needs to be some reasonable growth and expansion here, just our town has grown and there's 500 births in the last 10 years, those, 20 years from now, those kids are gonna go, hey, I wanna live in the house in the town where I grew up and they can't, right now they can't, never mind in 20 years from now, it's probably gonna get even worse unless we change the direction this, of this train we're riding on, and we need to make some changes and that's, that's all.
So on the support of such as far, we're in budget season and the town is actually doing really well with our employees and everything going on right now, which is really good, our departments are okay, I mean, we're shorthanded like everybody else, but don't look at the negative things that people are talking about, the town's in really good shape and hope you can keep it forward your taxes, because we're trying to do our best to keep them low.
I have nothing.
Just real quick, well, the biggest, most boring thing was obviously there was a, an election with huge turnout, really proud of this town, this town really.
88%.
Has.
That's amazing.
An amazing turnout for, for elections, and the individuals in our town that run our elections and are, take part in that are absolutely phenomenal, it's not party specific, it's people from all sides getting together, making everything work and everybody, everybody's patient, I was in the, the wrong side alpha split line apparently, cause the line was off the door for the I through Z's for some reason, but, but it went so well and I'm always so impressed with, with all of that, and, and I'm sure it was a very long day for, for everybody that was, was part of it. For anybody that interested in like seeing how some cities are handling it, cause you mentioned Arizona, I literally just came across an article about a Danish city called Nordhaven, it was an old industrial port and they're completely redeveloped it, but everything's, is designed to be walkable, so everything's five minutes, you should be able to get to a school, a playground, you know, shopping, whatever, five minutes, so it's, it's, and the people there tend to be very happy, so it was pretty, it was pretty interesting to see, that's obviously a city, so it's a completely different thing, but it was pretty neat just from a planning perspective.
These people in this community definitely need cars.
Yeah.
That could be.
Golf carts.
Or, you know, golf carts, that kinda stuff, but yeah.
Yeah, but it was neat, it was called Nordhaven, but it was just pretty interesting to see the, the engineering and, and everything around it.
I have no real updates except for I want to encourage Mr. Evans, I definitely wanna read that article that you're working on, the last one that you sent out was very thoughtful, detailed, there's some good numbers in there, I circled them some things, so I'm interested in seeing your new one, I wanna encourage you to do the same. We certainly know that we, as a planning board, we like to hope that we're going to be able to shape the future of Nottingham, and I'd like to participate in that and still keep a rural feel to it. We can do that.
I, I think we can, yeah, I think we can, and, and I don't wanna sound negative at all, I think, like, I think the condo project up on a 4, it's gonna generate $150,000 of income, provide housing, that route is 46% of the town commutes on Route 4 and it's a great location and nobody's going, wow, that affected our small town feel, and so it's, it's a good thing, it's just, where can we, where can we accommodate people's needs and existing people in the town, that's all.
Other side of the mountain.
Other side. Other side of the town.
Alana, do you have anything for us?
So, thank you.
No, no new cases, right?
We are adjourned, it is 9:26, thank you everybody, 9:27.